If everyone could find a seat. I'm bringing the September 4th Board of Selectment meeting to order. Thank you, everybody. Thanks, everybody, for being here tonight. First on the agenda, we're going to start with Susie Lowe to talk to us about the Pine Hill ski area.
Just a little correction, my name is Susie Lowe Stockwell.
Gotcha. Can you speak in the microphone, Susie?
You need to turn around.
I'm Susie Lowe Stockwell, president of the Pine Hill Ski Club. So I'm here to, two things, to thank the town of New London for its many years of already supporting the operations of Pine Hill Ski Club, but to also formally request that we can continue to use what is known, apparently, as the Shepherd's Pit. I did send a letter, as I do, to all of our 12 landowners back in June that went to Kim Halquist, of course, with the request that has been filled out annually by the town. But I also sent a special permission form to the Conservation Commission, which we have received their approval back already, so we're good. So just asking the town of New London for Pine Hill to be able to continue to use the Shepherd's Pit. That is our trailhead. I do have some information here I could leave with all of you. So if you want some more information about Pine Hill, we've been around since 2005. John and Nancy Slocher actually started Pine Hill Ski Club, but it was an offshoot of what some of you may already know of as Norsk. That was at Lake Senape Country Club, started back in the 70s, I believe. So we have about 20 kilometers of groomed trails, thanks to 12 generous landowners that allow us to go ahead and maintain trails. We do grant insurance for year-long coverage to each of the landowners as well. We operate as soon as the snow falls until there is nothing, so we never know. We've averaged between being open 45 days to 92, so we never know. It just depends on Mother Nature. But our biggest feather in our cap, we think, is our ski program. We do offer Pine Hill facilities to be open free of charge to the area, to the district elementary schools, thanks to the good work of many volunteers. Kathy Robgen, who happens to be here in the audience, has chaired that for many, many years, much to our great success. We average about 100 students and chaperones annually that come to that program. And we also have free ski equipment, thanks to what used to be Village Sports, and now Nordic Skater helps us out with ski equipment. So people can come if they don't even have equipment and use our equipment free of charge. Sometimes they leave a donation, and we're able to buy new equipment every year to help those kids. We see about 200 season pass holders every year, on average. And another, of course, we have many visitors that come from all over New England. We're really surprised where they come from. We are the southernmost Nordic area now in the state, which is a great thing to have. We don't make snow. That's our only deterrent. But we see over 2,000 visitors a year using the trails. So you've got a little gem here in New London. I hope you realize, and we're very grateful for that. Any questions?
No, I don't think so. Do we have to make a motion to? Okay. Except, we're, sorry, say that again? At the trails, so I need a motion to accept allowing parking on the townland for the Pine Hill ski area? All in favor? Aye. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next up, we've got Sam and Adam to talk to us about the RFP for the Public Works Building, which is right here.
Thanks for having us. We have hopefully the finalized RFP that we've kind of worked with you over the last few weeks to adjust and tweak. We sent it off to you a couple of weeks ago to have you guys add your additions, which we did. We also changed just some consistency things throughout it, and we think this is the finalized document. Adam, I talked a little bit today about when we think, if you guys agree and we have the approval to send this out, we try to get it out Monday or Tuesday, when we'd like to see it back, ideally within a month. So October 15th, 16th, around there, is kind of where we were hopeful to get kind of answers and reports back. So do you guys have any additional questions or concerns? And I think Adam has some comments as well.
We can point you to the areas that changed. There's a couple of comments that BB made on headings for different sections that were not super material, but they did change. And then the more material changes are the ones that you guys requested at the last one to make sure that it included the possibility of co-location of the police department to sort of understanding that there's a lot of constraints there and that it may not be feasibly possible, but that we're not closing that door entirely yet. And so under project background and scope on page one there, the third paragraph just sort of gives some background to the fact that we were working on the police station when this came about. And so we've had to shift our focus, but we haven't closed the door enough co-location could be possible. And then on the third page, second page, I'm sorry, under number four, program objectives and design considerations, there's also the reference there. And it's at that point that we make sure the consultant knows that we've already done the space needs analysis in 2024 so that they're not on the hook for duplicating that process, that we own that information already. We know more or less what the footprint of a police station would need to be. It's simply, is there any chance of that being accommodated here?
Yep. Okay. Do you, is there, is there a timeframe in this document that says?
If you guys agreed to, like, a month to get feedback from them, we would add it. But currently, there is not, because we wanted to make sure.
So it goes right on the top here where it has the submission deadline, so right now we have it as to be determined.
TBD, okay.
You know, we would fill in whatever date you're comfortable with.
Do you think they need a whole month?
I think a month is pretty tight for them, I think, most likely. Yeah, I think, I think a month is the absolute shortest that we should allow.
Okay, and about how many folks do you think you'll be sending this out to?
Well, it will get posted publicly, so like, New Hampshire, NMHMA will post it, and then we'll post it on our website, and then try to hand-deliver it due to some other firms and things like that. So I think it really depends on what their workload availability is and stuff, so.
Okay.
I think a great pool would be four or five that we would have to consider.
To pick from, okay.
I don't remember with the police bid how many we got, but I think it was around there.
Yeah, I think that was three.
It was three.
Yeah. Okay, do you need us to make a motion to authorize you sending this out, or is just us saying we're good to go?
No, we need to.
Make a motion? So can I have a motion to authorize the publication of this RFP for designer and architectural services for the DPW facility project? All in favor? Aye. Okay.
Do you guys want us to just touch on our scenario that we ran Wednesday, just because I think it's kind of an important update for the site? So in the beginning of this, we had come to you and said that we may be able to do some alterations to a building or the site in general, just to hopefully help us kind of continue with flow over the next year or two, depending on when we're able to get this out. So Adam and I went down and kind of measured the whole site and then was able to scale it. And we also measured all of our equipment, took an inventory of everything, worked with my staff at DPW to try to figure out what we have, what needs to actually be stored, and how could it be stored in a manner that, you know, will make operations easy for the future, but also plans for growth in the future and so on. So what you'll see to the right of Janet, we can kind of pick it up if need be, and people can take a peek at it, is that. We used poster board and then just kind of scaled everything on paper. We believe with the addition of five garage doors, we can actually house everything that Public Works owns for equipment inside and actually easily.
And this is the lower shop, to be specific.
Yes, thank you. Yep, the existing 2004 building. Now, we don't know what that, if that's even feasible at this time. We've reached out to Tremble Nelson, who actually built the building, and we're going to meet with them Tuesday at 9:00 to figure out if that's actually a feasible option, how much that might cost. And we ran the scenario with the crew and actually put all this equipment in there in this configuration and figured out, will it actually work, or is it just something that looks good on paper? And it did work, and we were very surprised and pleased with it. Again, it does plan for a little bit of future growth for storage. And what else am I trying to hit on here?
I would just, for anybody who might not be oriented to the lower shop, so there's the bay doors where the existing plow trucks already are stored, and then there's one additional large bay door that you see from Pleasant Street. And so this would add, or South Pleasant Street. So this would add two bay doors to that face and three bay doors to the rear, which most of you have probably never seen before, that abuts the sort of Lion Brook side of the property, that would allow for easier access. Right now, the reason that this can't happen with the existing doors, even though they were able to try it, is that you would have to move, like, eight pieces of equipment to get one out. And so how they have to do it right now is stack them at an angle so that they can get them out through that single door on the gable end without having to move all the different pieces at once. So that's why just adding a few more doors changes the entire usability of the space.
Along with that, we also scaled everything in winter setup. So trucks are scaled to have, like, plows and wings on them in this. So if you look at the plow truck portion, the trucks don't look like they fit out because they get stored with the wings and the plows down, which make the trucks larger. Same with the one tons and pickups and things, they're scaled with plows on them because winter operation is kind of worst-case scenario. I think it's also important that, this doesn't mean that we don't need another garage space, because we obviously kind of lost where we do our maintenance. So we touched on it last time, that we need, like, fleet management or a maintenance building. And that helps us hopefully guide through the process of working with a firm on the RFP, but just in general, like, what we need. So we're not just saying, we need space, because that's kind of pretty broad. We need space to do oil changes, service work, washing trucks, you know, things like that, fabrication. Whereas right now, everything fits in there or could fit in there, like, with these additions, but it's not workspace, it's storage space. So what we're really going to be looking for as we go forward is replacing the lost lunchroom and office space and things like that, but also we need purpose-built space where we can actually do our normal maintenance and plans for, if the town were to have a mechanic that's going to do all the town service work and things like that, without, you know, cutting our nose off by saying, okay, we can make it work with this. Because, well, I'm telling you, we can make it work storage-wise, we can't make it work to continue our normal operations that just happen on a day-to-day basis without a lot of pain, so.
That would, that would be a smaller building than?
I, it's smaller building than what we initially thought before we ran this exercise. So we wanted to kind of go back and say, kind of do our own space needs analysis and say, all right, what do we actually need? And so this definitely helped us realize that with a renovation of that lower shop, the space need is less. So I think that definitely was worth running, and, you know, many thanks to Adam for his help and then the crew at DPW for being in on it. And so when we initially did this, this is important to me and Public Works, we had a meeting, Ashley, myself, and Adam, and the entire crew at Public Works, and said, this is our idea on paper, do you even think it could work, and is it something you want to explore as well? Because they're ultimately the ones that are going to be using that building and having to live with the decision that maybe I made or we made on their behalf. And there was really good buy-in from them. So when we were actually able to run this scenario and put the equipment in there in this configuration, there was a lot of lightbulb moments, and a lot of people went, wow, this could really work. And, you know, some of these employees said, we've worked here for 20 years, before this building even existed, and we never thought of this, so this is great. So to have that employee buy-in and people excited about it, I think really helps kind of foster this as a good plan moving forward, so.
Yeah, no, that's what I wanted you to mention.
Yeah. Glad I touched on it.
Sam, just to be clear, you're not talking about any actual additional square footage to that building, just new bay doors potentially?
Yep, just new bay doors. Now, when the RFP comes back, they may find that we may be able to add an addition that would account for maybe additional base space that then further solves the problem, or adding addition on that solves, like, the lunchroom, office space need with that. So it could make more land available at Public Works, just for future use, maybe not even the police department, just in general. But, you know, I think it is the more responsible direction, so.
And the hope would be that the cost for adding five doors is not so exorbitant that we can't accomplish this out of a capital reserve fund sometime, just so that their operations this winter are able to go on mostly unimpacted and possibly next winter. But the reality is, I think we are all suffering sticker shock on a regular basis from construction projects, so we don't really know what to expect on the cost. As Sam mentioned, we reached out to Tremble Nelson, who I have a relationship with, Christian Ufford, from other projects in town, but they are also the company that built that in 2004. So we're hoping that they still have good plan sets. We are going to try and get into the archives between now and Tuesday and see if we still have good plan sets so that they can actually assess the structural feasibility of this without having to go down, you know, having a whole assessment done, because obviously that would cost substantially more. But hopefully, in a couple of weeks, we'll have more information on what that cost actually looks like.
Do we do any of the maintenance of the police cruisers down at Public Works?
Currently, no. We do not do any lake fleet management. It's something I think the town explored many years ago, just because the cost of service work and things like that is going up, and that's why we kind of talk about that now. Obviously, Public Works has many vehicles as it is that need service work, and that's been a conversation that continues to come up, is, you know, if you're paying $250 for an oil change on every single vehicle, how long does it take before you've essentially paid that in an employee? So that's why everyone at Public Works does service work on all of our own equipment, but we don't do it on other departments. You know, if it needed to be done, we would try our best to help them out, but I think it's something that eventually may come up from a cost analysis standpoint that might make sense, so.
Thank you, guys, for all this work. It's fantastic. Does anybody out here have any questions for Adam and Sam on any of this that they've talked about? Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, next, we have, we are doing something new. We are, we have invited all of our local lake protective associations here tonight, you know, making an effort to open up communication with them regularly. And we're talking a little bit about maybe getting regular updates from you all, but we just wanted you all to be here tonight and to kind of talk about how the summers went and any updates that you had with cyanobacteria or anything else going on, loons. We love to hear about the loons. So I guess we're gonna, you're gonna go one at a time, and we'll start with the LSPA. And then if you all could introduce yourselves too, for the people that don't already know you.
That's great. Well, thank you all for inviting us to speak tonight. It's been a busy summer for lakes, especially with concerns about cyanobacteria blooms, so appreciate the opportunity to, to talk about that tonight. I'm Elizabeth Harper. I'm the executive director of the Lake Senape Protective Association. And our mission is to preserve and enhance the environmental integrity of the Lake Senape region, and we do that through education, research, and collaborative action. And we do that across the Lake Senape watershed, which includes a lot of the other lake associations that we'll, we'll talk about tonight, and we partner with, with those associations and others that are in our region. So the education component of our mission, we work with schools. We have a Gift of the Glacier play that we do at the New London Elementary School every year. We have nature exploration storytime for preschoolers on Tuesday mornings. And we offer field trips for students that are coming from schools and across the region. We also do education that's targeted at pretty much everyone in the watershed. So we have planning and zoning board workshops that we offer, workshops for landscapers, for realtors, really anyone who's making decisions on a regular basis that impacts what's happening in the watershed. We also are working with towns in many different ways, and we really appreciated the collaborations that we've had here in New London, working on septic regulations recently. So a lot of the efforts to prevent cyanobacteria blooms come down to limiting nutrient input into our lakes. There are a lot of different approaches that we take to that, but septic regulations are one of those. And so we've really appreciated the collaboration on those with town of New London and all of the other towns in the watershed. We've also been working on a lot of storm water management projects, so reducing erosion and runoff into our lakes. So some of those projects recently have been at Buckland Beach, Wallula Homeowners Association. There's a, on the Cleveland Woltz property, there's also a site that we've been working on. And a lot of these are in collaboration with the other lake associations locally as well. So those have been some of the really important on-the-ground efforts to reduce nutrient input. We're also working to reduce the amount of salt that's going into the lakes and trying to work with homeowners, businesses, and highway departments to reduce the amount of salt that's entering the lake because of its impact on water quality. And we're also offering a lot of education and outreach materials at our Center for Lake Studies. We have pamphlets and brochures and, you know, workshops for homeowners to figure out what they can do on their own properties, because so much of the watershed property is privately owned, and what people do on their own land is really important, too. So we're working hard in collaboration with a lot of partners to improve water quality and, and some of the education and opportunities that people can have to learn how to do that. We also have our Water Quality Lab that's at Colby Sawyer. We keep baseline data on all of the water quality for lakes in the region. We do water quality sampling for about 25 lakes in the area. And that's an important partnership with Colby Sawyer College and also with the Department of Environmental Services. So that's kind of a broad overview of a lot of the things that we're working on. And I know some of the other lake associations are going to talk in more detail about what they've been doing. But just wanted to say we appreciate all the collaboration and any way that we can work with you or provide information that's helpful in, in your efforts. We're here to help. And on our board, we have a representative to the town of New London, and that's Mike Morgan. So he's also available if you have questions or have ideas of ways that we can help. So I'll turn it over to, I think Deb Hoover is next, from Little Lake Senape. So that's great. Another important partner.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Deb Hoover, and I'm serving as president of the Little Lake Senape Protective Association now for two years. And I'm also a new board member of New Hampshire Lakes, so I'm doubling down on lake protection. Really happy to be with all of you this evening. And I also want to say that we deeply appreciate the town's continued support of Little Lake Senape Protective Association and its lake host program. And I'd like to share a few updates on our program from this season, all of which were carried out under a strategic framework that we are reviewing and refining annually. Our stewardship efforts have expanded in recent years in response to increased threats to lake health from extreme weather events that raise lake temperature and increase runoff entering our lake. Our 2025 annual meeting of members held on July 20th featured Andrea Lamoreau, president of New Hampshire Lakes, who presented on threats to New Hampshire lakes across the state and specifically discussed conditions at Little Lake Senape. So we, we really value the lake host program. For the 2025 season, we employed seven paid lake hosts and were fortunate to have the help of 12 dedicated volunteers. As of August 23rd, our team had completed 1,844 boat and trailer inspections, and no aquatic invasive species were detected. In addition to conducting these inspections, our lake hosts are trained to play a vital role in educating boaters, anglers, and the public about threats imposed by invasive species and how we can prevent their spread. Weekend, excuse me, weekend coverage at the boat ramp began on May 9th, with daily coverage starting on May 23rd. The ramp is staffed from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM on weekdays and from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM on weekends. We reduced daily coverage starting September 2nd, and that will continue through September 14th. Weekend-only coverage will conclude on September 28th. In terms of expenses, as of August 17th, our payroll total was $17,226, and we project a total summer payroll of $23,000 approximately. This program is made possible through the generous funding of the town, a grant from New Hampshire Lakes, and contributions from our association members. While lake hosting is one of our cornerstone efforts, it is really part of a broader mission. And our longstanding programs include lake hosting, invasive species monitoring through the Weed Watch program. We have more than 40 Weed Watchers, volunteers, who are monthly from June to September going out and inspecting for invasive weeds and, and other critters. We also have our water quality testing. And in the past couple of years, we are advancing new strategies that are essential to protecting the lake and its watershed. And these include watershed education, including cyanobacteria and road salt impact, enhanced levels of communication with the town regarding cyanoblooms at Buckland and other places, and providing prompt notice to beachgoers. And I want to call out Putnam. We had a meeting back earlier in the summer, and we really refined those, those communication efforts. We've been engaged in fragile shoreline protection projects, including the rain garden at Buckland Beach. And then, as Elizabeth mentioned, the two shoreline restoration plannings along Route 14. We have improved communication and outreach, including the Point newsletter that goes out to all our members and members of the community that's published three times a year, and then an active social media program that, that reaches our, our members and others. Promotion of the new town's septic ordinance and both lake smart and watershed wise homeowners education programs. And then strong collaboration with our partners that every year gets better and better, including the town, New Hampshire Lakes, New Hampshire DES, LSPA, Osborn Sergeant, and Pleasant Lake Protective Association. We are continually expanding our website and our online, online resources to help educate members and others. We're engaged in public policy and advocacy work at the local and state levels, and then loon protection initiatives. And just today, we authorized an expenditure to rebuild the loon nest in the cove near Stanley Point. In 2024, we had 170 association members and more than 80 volunteers helping us conduct this work in various capacities. And this committed community is what makes our work both possible and impactful. So once again, thank you for your support, and together, we're protecting the lake and this place that we all love. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Okay. You're welcome. Who have we got next? Mesir Pand?
All right, there we go. Yeah, down here. So, yeah, I am filling in for Tricia, who wasn't feeling well today, but she gave me her notes. Thank you for having us. We've had a generally positive summer. We remain free of cyanobacteria blooms, which is not the case everywhere, so we're very happy to have that. And also invasive species, water species, to date. And we also have seen in general an increase in volunteers. The Lake Host program is an example of that, which, of course, we are very, also grateful for the town's assistance. And that's a New Hampshire Lakes program, and they're, they're great also. They, they're very supportive, and it's a great program. We have three paid lake hosts, 15 volunteers, which is up from 10 last year. And just as a heads up, one of the things we did this year differently is because the lake hosts, you know, it's like every Tuesday and Thursday, or every Monday and Wednesday, whatever. And nobody necess, I mean, not everybody, some people do, but not everybody wants to commit to a schedule like that for the whole summer. So we started having substitutes. And all these people, the extra, so we have, like, five substitutes. And then if somebody can't make it, and it makes it just easier for everyone. I just highly recommend that because it worked really well on our pond. We had 550 logged, total hours of that, 325 were volunteer hours, which was a 31% increase from 2024, because we just had so many more people involved. And a third of that was, was the subs, so that was really good. And we had 205 boat inspections. We also have the Weed Watch program, again, all volunteers, which is, we're very fortunate to have so many people that are so interested in Mesir Pand. I mean, you live on there, you want it to be as good as it can get. We have invasive land species, the Japanese buckthorn, we have that glossy buckthorn. We have invasive land species, the Japanese buckthorn, we have that glossy buckthorn. We're dealing with an increase of salt in the pond, and so we're doing a program to evaluate that. We think it might be coming down from 89, and so we're going to do a lot of more research on that and then deal with the state, because if it is, then that's something the state would hopefully address. Significant milestones is we finished up a major grant with the watershed assistant grant from the state, and the final report was submitted in May. We had five roadwork projects completed. A lot of it had to do with replacing culverts and also, I forget what they call this, it had a funny name for it, but the, basically putting the stone in to keep the sides of the pond from going into the water, basically. And there's just a number of other things that manage the water. And the town is amazing. I mean, the road department, highway department, whatever they call it, they're amazing. Sam is amazing, and he's, we just have a great relationship, and it just works out so nicely, and we're really appreciative of him and the whole group over there. They're great guys. So all of our stormwater assets are now mapped. We got them mapped into the GIS, the town GIS, and so that should help the road department as well as us, and we're going to have a new program of managing our assets, because that's our big push for next year. And we did, we're able to reduce phosphorus loading by more than 10 pounds per year. So that was a good year for that. Looking ahead, sustaining all the programs that we have, instituting a culvert maintenance and inspection program to help reduce nutrient inputs. I mean, what we kind of, all of a sudden, we notice, oh, the culvert's broken, and we want to kind of catch it before it totally becomes a broken, basically. Working with the DES to identify the chloride levels, as I mentioned, for I-89. We're monitoring flow issues and evaluating unnatural blockages in Clark Creek, and we're continuing to build volunteer capacity for long-term pond stewardship. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Audrey. Go ahead.
Hello, I'm Bill Stockwell, and with Stuart Greer. We share the leadership responsibilities for Otter Pond Protective Association. We have done this since September of 2020. OPA was established in 1984 due to concerns among local residents about protecting the water quality of Otter Pond. Our mission, the Otter Pond Protective Association, serves to improve and preserve the quality of Otter Pond through the promotion of proper water, shoreline, watershed practices, avoidance of invasive species and pollution, and collaboration on protective efforts, all to ensure the value, enjoyment, and longevity of Otter Pond for current and future generations. Otter Pond is a 187-acre water body, 33 feet deep at its deepest spot, and one-third of the shoreline is in New London. The remainder is in George's Mills, part of the town of Sunapee. It receives most of its water from Baptist Pond and Star Lake in Springfield, and of course, Little Lake Sunapee in New London. Otter Pond provides more than half the surface water to Lake Sunapee via Otter Pond Brook. Stu?
Thanks, Bill. One of our major concerns is aquatic invasives management. Curly leaf pond weed, which is an invasive plant, is an imminent threat to Otter Pond because it has proliferated in Baptist Pond in Springfield. We have about 10 residents who are weed watching on a regular basis, and LSPA has visited on a regular basis to help us and frankly, lead us and look for curly leaf pond weed and other invasives. Between the DES and LSPA, several barriers were put up at the outlet of Baptist Pond and further on Baptist Pond Brook to try to catch any of the plant that's coming that way. In June of this year, a few curly leaf pond weed plants were found in Otter Pond, and by our weed watching team leader, and LSPA arranged for divers to come within the next day or two, and they came and they found a couple of plants. The supposition is that it was probably from a bird because of the distance, because of the limitation of the number of plants and the distance from the Baptist Pond Brook that they were found. Be that as it may, we have to keep looking on a regular basis, which we will do. LSPA is coming back, and we have divers coming back later on this month. DES survey, came and surveyed the pond in July, and they didn't discover any other curly leaf pond weed or any other invasive plants. So, good news there. Bill?
So we continue tracking the water quality. We're doing testing, and testing over the last few years reveals, like other ponds in the area, high conductivity levels from tributaries, including salt, or indicating salt, I should say, and likely from the state highways, 114, Route 11, Interstate 89. High phosphorus levels from tributaries, tributaries especially the Star Lake Tributary, which runs through an area by the power plant. The levels thankfully are average in the middle of the pond. Pleased to report no E. coli at Otterville Road Beach, which is frequented by locals. The Otterville Road Beach is owned by OPA, and we open it up to the public for the good of the public. We have had no, knock on wood, no cyanobacteria blooms for over 10 years.
Because Otter Pond is in the Lake Sunapee watershed, it, we're involved in the watershed management plan, and one of the projects that LSPA has identified as one of the more important areas to improve in the watershed. And the plan is similar to Buckland Beach and in Springfield, Twin Lake Village, and Wallula, to add plants, vegetation to the beach area. This has to be done in phases because we have 400 feet of frontage on Otter Pond and need to break up the work. So the idea in planting more vegetation there is to reduce runoff, stormwater runoff, and care as you've heard, salt, sand, phosphorus, nitrogen, gas, and oil from cars. The current plan is to start planting some native plants, some hardy native plants in the spring. We're going to do it this fall, but have run out of time there, and in future periods to come and to add more vegetation and probably some more shore up some of the eroding shorelines to the beach, and to add several what's called infiltration steps, timber with rocks in it that will impede the waters runoff from the road into the water. We met with Sam and Adam and Chief Cobb a couple of months ago about this, and presented what was the then-plan, listened to their feedback, and we've scaled back the project dramatically based on their feedback. It would just be too costly and too involved, but we know that this will help. So we thank you for your time. Thank you for inviting us. Very pleased to be part of this, and we look forward to collaborating with the town in the future.
I just have one quick question, Stu. Is that project, the watershed management project, is it starting at the Otter, at the beach?
Yeah, it'll start right at.
That's kind of the priority?
A section of the beach, yes.
Got it. All right. Thanks.
Stu, this curly leaf invasive species.
Yeah.
What are the implications of that in the water?
Well, if it's, Elizabeth is much better at this than I am. She's the scientist, but an invasive plant in a water body will take over the area, take over the water. It'll take over the areas where the native plants are growing, where the wildlife, the fish, habitate, and it can have an impact on that, have impact on navigation. Quite a lot was found in Baptist Pond, around the perimeter of the pond, around the island, and you can't swim through it, you can't do anything. So it would have an impact on the enjoyment of the pond, it would have an impact on fishing, probably.
Property values.
Yeah, property values ultimately, because who wants to live on a pond full of weeds that you can't use?
And so what do you do to remediate it?
You can use herbicides, particular herbicides, and Baptist Pond has done this, Diquat, to the tune of $35,000 for a treatment. You can have divers come in and pull the plants and put them in a mesh bag and pull them out. You can have diver-assisted suction, basically a big vacuum to pull them out for large volumes of it, and you have to keep at it, just like a lot of things. You have to keep looking, and you have to keep maintaining it to keep it out and keep it from growing.
Thank you. Whereas DES would pay for a substantial amount maybe the first year, maybe the responsibility of the lake associations on a greater extent in the succeeding years, so it's a big concern. Good question, though. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Last but not least, we've got the Pleasant Lake Protective Association. Hi, Jen.
Hi, BB. How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
I think you already have one of these.
Do I?
From the annual meeting?
No.
I'm going to talk about this in a minute.
Okay.
So I'm Jen Esden.
Stand up here. I'm Jen Esden. I'm chair of the Pleasant Lake Protective Association Wildlife Committee and the Membership and Communications Committees. We currently have 230 members and produce a newsletter that is sent out to over about 900 subscribers. And if you get the newsletter, then you know that we have a successful nesting pair of loons on Pleasant Lake, and they have a healthy, big, strong, healthy chick this year. The communications committee has created this folder I just put in front of you. We're calling it a welcome package. It's an information package with pieces from New Hampshire Lakes, New Hampshire DES, Lake Sunapee Protective Association, along with four pamphlets that we have just recently created. The package will inform watershed residents about what we all can do to protect Pleasant Lake from further deterioration and future cyanobacteria blooms. And the initial distribution is being hand-delivered to all watershed residents, and we're about 80% complete with distributing this package. It's interesting, people who are distributing it are going door to door, and it's opening a lot of conversation and dialogue with our residents, which is great. Going forward, the plan is any new resident who moves into the watershed will get one of these packages. So last year, Colby Sawyer, there was a Colby Sawyer environmental class led by Nick Baer and David Lutz, who conducted a watershed study for Pleasant Lake. Then PLPA then sponsored two of the students from that class to continue the study through the summer months. Their results have provided us with great information about where trouble spots are in the lake and its 27 tributaries. It's been giving us a very good baseline, and now we're actually set up to do the testing of the tributaries ourselves, but there's no water in the tributaries, so when it rains again, we'll be all ready and set. This study is posted on the PLPA website, if anybody's interested in seeing the results. The PLPA recently added two board members who are environmental experts. You all probably know David Hollinger, who is a climate change and forest scientist and professor emeritus of UNH, and Craig Williamson is a renowned limnologist and professor emeritus of University of Miami in Ohio. And they both grew up on Pleasant Lake and are deeply invested in its future. Their expertise will help guide us towards making a more proactive approach to helping the lake, and they're really working hard. Last week, and PLPA sponsored a presentation by Doug Darling, a biochemist, professor, biochemistry professor, who lives on Tucker Pond, and Tucker Pond has this persistent cyanobacteria situation that lasts months. The property vows have been affected, and they can't swim in the water, they can't let their pets in the water, or their kids. So it was really an eye-opening presentation. We, actually, a few of the PLPA board members first saw the presentation at the Meser Pond annual meeting, and we liked it so much, we invited him to speak for PLPA, and we had about 50 people come, and we've recorded it, so we are hoping to put that up on our website when the recording is all edited and ready to go. And we've since are in the very beginning stages of putting together a watershed plan, much of which is inspired by Doug Darling's presentation. So, thank you for that. This is, so the PLPA board is also currently weighing the pros and cons of continuing with the annual fireworks display on Pleasant Lake. Board members are divided on the issues, with some believing that the tradition of the fireworks is important, and others believing that the excessive increase in the cost and effect that they have on wildlife outweighs the benefit of the tradition. So unable to really come to a decision, we are certainly going to, we're creating a survey, it will go out to all the members of PLPA and the town. We're going to find a way to reach a lot of the town residents, and hopefully that'll help us make a decision on what we're going to do. Most likely, we will have at least one more show next year. After that, I'm not sure. And our focus is becoming more about community involvement in protecting the lake. Like our president, Doug Baxter, wrote a letter to his hall farm neighbors about protecting the watershed, and he included this new brochure, and again, has opened up a dialogue in his neighborhood, and we're trying to do that a lot all around the lake. Then there are a couple of little projects, the Low Plain Beaver Dam. We are working with the New London Conservation Commission about repairing the drainage issue there. The beaver deceivers clogged, and PLPA expects to contribute labor to the project.
Okay. If you don't mind hanging around for a little bit, I think Bob is going to talk about that during the public comments.
Okay.
So that would be great.
I don't know a whole lot about it, but I'll learn something.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll fill in. There's also a project in Elkins Beach, which Sam is who everybody loves, I hear, and so do we. It's a boat ramp, like a convergence of where the boat ramp and Marshall's Garage, and there's a dry well there that's filled with sediment, and we're working with them to clean that out and build another dry well so that they can be cleaned a couple of times a year from now on. So we are thanking Sam for all of his help with that, and we're working more and more on collaboration with our neighboring lake associations. Lake Sunapee Protective Association sponsored a quarterly lake and pond association networking series, which I didn't go do with Doug, I'm sure he has, and said it's been a great exchange of information that we found very valuable. So that, and the Lake Host program, of course, we thank you for your support with the Lake Host program. I don't have statistics from that. I just thought, ooh, somebody, everybody was talking about it, I should talk about it, too. But it's, yeah, it's a really great asset for protecting our lake from invasive species, weeds and clams and mussels and all kinds of weird stuff, so.
Yeah.
So, there you go.
Thank you. Thanks, Jen. Anybody have any questions? No? Okay. Oh, go ahead, Adam.
Just to clarify on the work that's happening for stormwater management in Elkins, the boat ramp is not part of this next project, just so that no one thinks we didn't carry that out. It's at the beach area, is what we're working on.
Thanks. Well, thank you all for.
Well, thank you all for being here, and I wanna, I wanna give a shout-out to Elizabeth for really working so closely with all of the other lake protective associations around town. I don't think that has been done in a long time, maybe since my father was the director of LSPA, but, you know, the LSPA has so many resources, and it's so important to share them with all the other lake associations. I always say it, our lakes are our most important resource, I think, in, in this town. So, really, really grateful for all of you volunteering all of your time, and it's really important, so thank you all for being here tonight. Anybody else wanna say anything? Okay. All right. Yeah, Jen, if you don't mind hanging out for a little bit, I think Bob wants to talk to us about the Beaver Dam. Elizabeth, you might be interested in hearing about it, too. Next, we're gonna go to Lynn about, we have to vote on renewing our investment policy.
That is correct.
Okay.
So, tonight I'm asking the board to adopt the town's investment policy. This policy has been adopted in prior years, but the auditors have recommended that it be re-adopted annually to ensure compliance with state law. The investment policy serves as the town's guidelines for keeping public funds safe, secure, and properly invested. Under multiple RSAs, municipalities are limited to placing funds only in institutions and investments that are considered safe and risk-free. This ensures that the taxpayer dollars are not exposed to unnecessary risk while still allowing us to manage cash responsibly. In addition, by adopting this policy, and with the signature of Steve Thoreau as treasurer, the board is delegating deposit authority to, for any funds received, to the town clerk, tax collector, and the finance officer. Not to me and Will specifically, but just the position, so anybody who takes those positions can do the deposits. This provides efficiency in daily operations while maintaining clear oversight accountability. And overall, this policy is one of the safeguards we have in place to protect the community's money. It ensures that all deposits and investments are handled in accordance with state statutes, using only federally insured and otherwise secure financial institutions. So, and I think on the memo I sent to you, I put the actual motion.
Did I have to use? Oh, here we go. Okay, can I?
You don't have to use it, but I thought it would help.
Yeah. Thank, I appreciate, well, it gives the RSA, so I appreciate that. So I'm, I, can I have, oh, go ahead. Is there any, is there any change from previous years?
I changed nothing except the date.
Thank you. Okay. Good question. Could I have a motion to adopt the town of New London investment policy as presented pursuant to RSA 35:09?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
And it sounds like Chris actually ended up talking to the three of you earlier, so I think we're good there. You do have to sign something, so it is in the signing folder for you later.
Okay. All right, and here we are to public comments. Does anybody have anything they wanna comment on that is not on the agenda? Mr. Brown?
Bob Brown, New London Conservation Commission, and I thank you for your time, and I apologize for dropping this on you so quickly. I shared some information yesterday with Ashley, I know, and there's still some information coming in, but the reason this is such a rush is we're working a very tight schedule with a potential vendor, service provider. And the topic is the Estacaria Wildlife Management Area at Low Plain, which hopefully we're all familiar with. It's 254 acres of wildlife natural area that runs between Andover Road and Mountain Road. A lot of interesting things to see in there. Davis Path is a nice wide, relatively flat hiking trail. The area is all about, really, wildlife and recreation, as well as water quality and the other things we enjoy. It is owned by the town, it is managed by the Conservation Commission, and the entire parcel is under an easement held by New Hampshire Fish and Game. So we work very closely with those folks. There's a beautiful pond in there that is the home of a lot of different wildlife. There's observation blinds. We get a lot of support from Elkins Fish and Game, they do a lot of maintenance work. It's a big area, a lot of maintenance. With the animals, of course, come beavers. And the mission for Low Plain is to have it be home for wildlife. So the beavers are there, and it's, it's very interesting, they build a huge dam. Sometimes they get a little too active. And we're at a situation now, that dam down there, for any of you who have walked in, it's a significant dam, and it's been built up over 12 inches this last year. The water is very high, even now when we have an extreme drought. The two exit pipes, there is an original corrugated straight pipe that was put in at the bottom of the dam. After that, a few years later, 2013, I believe, we constructed a caster master, or what most people call the generic term, a beaver deceiver. We had that built by a professional, and that helped keep the water moving. It's very important that that pond, which is much bigger than it looks, when you walk in and look around the corner, it doesn't look that big, but it goes almost all the way out to Mountain Road. It's a marsh. That hole in the ground was created, by the way, a little trivia, in the late 50s, early 60s, when 89 went through, that's where they got a lot of the material. So they dug this huge hole that then became a beaver pond, and there's a lot of other things, birds and so forth, in there. So the problem is, the pipes are not flowing, they're blocked, and we need to get in there and find out why. It's complicated, because that water depth, we were in there last week, the water depth at the dam is eight feet. That's almost two feet above normal, and it's not moving. It's, it breached early spring, the water's been flowing over the top of the dam, it's flowed around the sides, it washed out part of our trail, it undermined the walkway, and it almost took out the bridge. We were prepared to fix this, get in there and try to examine the area, to find out what we needed to do. And some folks from the Pleasant Lake area were very concerned about this, and they came and talked to us. Their issue was, and the plan is not really to release a lot of water, we need to get it down. The higher the water the get, gets, the more work the beavers do, so that only makes it a bigger problem. We need to release part of it, and that was their concern, that this water may run down into an area of sort of unknown. There was a little bit of a secondary dam that was built, and it was holding a little bit, but the distance from the outlet of the pond to, the big issue is Sawyer Brook goes down into Elkins and eventually into Pleasant Lake. We're all concerned about water quality, we all wanna do this right, but we have to be practical about it, too. Their concern, I believe, was bacteria and possible blooms. So they asked us if we would hold off in fixing this dam until later. This was in April, May, you know, summer, swim season's coming along, all understandable, but this situation has gotten now critical, and we're worried that the dam is, could burst. And that happened about 20 years ago, and it wasn't good. We have inspected the outlet, all 2,200 feet down to the lake, and it's relatively clear. So we need to establish an appropriate and normal flow of water, so this thing does not become stagnant. There's, there's springs in there, and there's other sources of water, but the water is still flowing as dry as it's been. So we wanna make everyone happy. We agree with the folks at Pleasant Lake that, you know, we have to protect the water and be careful, but we have been maintaining that dam for a lot of years. I have, this will be my 18th year wallowing in the leeches and working on the outflow of that dam. And what we have done, we, we really wanna keep the emotion out of this, you know, we gotta look at this, what is right for the dam for Low Plain, and what's right for Pleasant Lake. So we have contacted, as we have for the entire Low Plain project, there were a lot of state, federal agencies that were involved in the formation of that, helping with the planning, construction, and so forth. So we went to UNH Extension Service, who we work very closely with, and we had some of their people come over and visit the site. They recommended that we work with the United States Department of Agriculture, the Wildlife Division, which is based in Concord, and we contacted those folks, and they came out and inspected. They presented a plan and told us exactly what we need to do, and it was a pretty good idea. It's not really, to fix the two pipes that are blocked, you almost have to take the dam out, and that's not gonna be good. So their suggestion was to install another working pipe further up. We're really concerned with controlling about the top two feet of the water. We're not planning to empty it. So they have presented us with a plan, and much to my surprise in talking with them, we said, okay, who do we get for a contractor? And they said, well, we do that type of work. I couldn't believe it. And so they came up, they put together a plan, they put together a quote, which, by the way, was about half the price of what we paid the folks 15 years ago. And these are credible folks, they know what they're doing, this is what they do every day. The problem now is timing. We have about three weeks to get this together. Two days ago, I wrote up all the information, purchase order, ready for approval and signature, and we need to get that to those folks, like, real quick to reserve a spot. If we don't, they're gonna get busy and they can't do it this year. And I have no idea what, another winter, we need to get that water moving. And I think these folks are as knowledgeable and qualified, and they're not gonna do something. You know, our concern was to get someone in there with machinery that might go a little crazy, and we sure don't want that. We want this project to come out right. We've been managing this for a lot of years, and I feel confident that we have a real good plan. So what we'd like to do, answer any questions anyone has, but we really, if we're gonna do this, we really have to move on it. It's about a $2,200 expense, which, for what they're gonna do, is not much. Basically, build another device, which is a cage to keep the beavers out, with a discharge pipe, and if need be, we can put a control on that pipe, but usually you don't have to. There's been a tremendous amount of damage in the area that I don't know whether we can fix or not. Erosion, a lot of earth washed out and went down the stream. That we'll have to look at, but we gotta get the water out of there before we can do anything.
I have a question. So this proposal that you've just gotten, is, was this, is this a new proposal, because I, is this a different plan than what you proposed in the spring to do with the pipes?
Our, it's different. What's different is, if we're going to fix the two pipes that aren't working.
Yeah.
We need to clear a lot of vegetation and material.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it would seem unusual that the beavers plug the outlet, they usually do it the other end, but it's at the bottom, so there could be a lot of sediment in there.
Yeah.
But to get to it, we had to clear.
Yeah.
Brush, and that's what these folks didn't want us to do. So we held off, and now this is really a much better plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I knew there was some, I knew there was some folks that were hesitant about the plan that you had in the spring, so this is, sounds like...
Yeah, the only plan we had was to clear so we could see where the problem was, and we didn't even get that far.
Jen, do you have any, any input from Pleasant Lake?
Well, I wonder where is, there's, you're talking about installing a new pipe in a different, where, like, where is this, is the new pipe gonna go?
Okay. Are you familiar with the Pleasant Dam?
Yeah, I've been there, I've seen it.
Okay. So, the old original pipe is really at the very bottom.
Okay.
Under now about eight feet of water. There is another newer device that is a little bit higher, and it's closer to the hiking trail.
It's visible from that?
Well...
From that little bridge?
Not really, because it's all covered with vegetation.
Okay.
Both, both of them are completely hidden, if you went down to look at them.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, I think I've seen it in the past, then.
Right.
Maybe you can see now.
Um...
So, what, then now, you're gonna leave that the way it is?
Yes, because we'd have to take the whole dam out to fix it.
That would be devastating.
You wouldn't want that.
Yeah.
No. And that, that was a good idea, well, you know, we were thinking of trying to, if we could get to where it was plugged, to go up there with Roto-Rooter or somebody and, you know, cling it out, but we don't know what's in there. It could just be sediment. One of those pipes is protected with a cage, the other isn't, and it's been there a long time. So this would be, you know, roughly this height, a new pipe, cage on the end, because we're only concerned with about the top two.
Right.
Every time the water goes up and it's still flowing over the top of the dam, you know, beavers go in there and make the dam higher.
So on the right side, is your facing the dam?
Yes, it'd be on the right, closest to the entrance.
That's where water was coming out.
Yeah, and, and it's washed, it washed out our walkway, you know, it's done a lot of damage in there, so obviously it would be in the dam.
Right.
But it would be closest to that side, and only in the top area. So, I mean, it's a really...
Lower the water in the marsh, but not too much?
Yeah, it's, it's 16, 18 inches higher than normal right now.
Considering how dry it is, that's shocking.
But you look, and the water's flowing over the top.
Yeah.
There is a lot of water that comes in on the other end, and I guess it's still coming in, there's probably some springs, but you would think normally, this time of year, there isn't much water flowing there.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, that sounds better than trying to take apart the dam, which, Kurt, at Low Plain, the marsh, there is a beaver pond, and there would not be water if we're not be, for be, beavers, so.
Yeah.
You want the beavers.
Right.
They're doing a good job.
Right.
And that, and the dams, what be, one of the things the beavers do with their dams is they slow down sediment that would otherwise be charging down river into the lake.
Okay.
So, you want the dams.
Yeah, we want the dams.
Correct.
Okay. Bob, has this plan, your new plan, been approved by all the members of the Conservation Commission?
Not specifically. We have approved the project for, you know.
Right.
All year.
Right.
You know, we know everyone's approved, we need to fix it.
Right.
The question was, we were asked to wait till later, and it seems like later's now.
But now, but now you have a new plan, for, you waited, but now it's a new plan, because I think the concern was the cyanobacteri, the bacteria flowing down into Pleasant Lake. Now we're at the end of the summer. David Hollinger's on the Conservation Commission, right?
Correct.
Has he reviewed this new plan?
I don't believe so, no.
So David, yeah, David is the guy on...
I know.
...to...
I know.
...regret motion.
I know. So, let's do this, let's try to get, talk tomorrow somehow, and try to get feedback from David Hollinger. I just don't, I, I don't wanna move forward with this until we know that Pleasant Lake is okay. I mean, what, Elizabeth, are you, have any thoughts about this? I mean...
I, I don't know.
Okay.
...in the project. I'm happy to, to look at it.
All right. Well, I don't wanna ask you to do anything, you don't, you, you're busy enough, but I'm just hesitant, Bob, to sign off on it right now until we get sign off from Pleasant Lake Protective Association. Does that, does that make sense to both of you? What are you guys thinking?
Well...
I, I completely agree with that. I'm just saying that...
And, but I understand the time is of the essence, and so...
In, in their letter.
Yeah.
Which, actually... Which actually came into the town clerk. PLPA respectfully requests that NLCC not review, remove the second dam at this time. We believe it would be wise, you know, to wait, and
And you're not suggesting removing the dam?
We're not.
No. Your idea has changed.
This was a complete, I don't know where that came from.
Right, this is a
I mean, if you move that dam, you know, it's going to be very noticeable. All we want to do, as I said earlier, is to get a, an appropriate and consistent flow of water, which we have had for the last 30 years.
Yeah. I just want sign off from them.
What if we were to potentially approve this conditionally?
Yeah.
Upon receipt of something from the folks at Pleasant Lake
Yeah.
Protective Association, so that
Yeah.
Then you could move forward.
Immediately, as soon as we receive that, because, I mean, it sounds like we're dealing with the aquatic equivalent of, you know, coronary bypass surgery. And, you know, rather than risk, you know, a catastrophic outcome if we had the green light ready to go upon your receipt of a note.
Yeah, I do just want to make one note, Jen. I know Doug is away for the next several weeks. I don't know if that's going to hold up any sort of decision from PLPA or not, but I believe that when he, his, his window of being away probably surpasses when they need to start.
I think the plan of asking David Hollinger
Okay, okay.
For, is it okay on it? He's familiar with the site, he knows the effect of the, whatever is going to happen,
Great.
How that will affect the lake, much better than I do.
Sure.
So, that's his expertise, and we have another person who, you know
One, one of the concerns is, unfortunately, there are a few people on the Conservation Commission that are very familiar with this, and we sent some photos that I'm, probably Ashley hasn't seen yet, but actually showing it during construction, because we were there. But the problem is, there weren't a lot of people there, and now, I mean, there are, people see the dam, but they don't understand what's going on underneath, and that's kind of hard.
And it sounds like perhaps some of the cyanobacteria blooms that have been in Pleasant Lake this summer have been in that area where the water has become stagnant because the water, it's not coming, flowing? Does that, does that make sense?
It's interesting. This was his personal and professional opinion.
Okay.
But one of the scientists from the Extension Service
Yeah.
Looked at the situation, and he said, "This isn't causing
Okay.
Blooms."
All right.
You know, I think it's partially because of the distance, you know, there's a lot of distance that that water has to travel. But, you know, a little bit at a time is safe, and not just let the whole thing go.
Okay.
I think there are a number of reasons why the cyanobacteria blooms are where they are, it's not just
Okay, okay.
But it, it could be a real problem if that dam failed
Right. Okay, so
Ashley say this gentleman is not available, though, for a few
No, that's a different person. David Hollinger's, or, in town.
Is it?
Yeah, he can, he can be contacted this evening. Okay, so do you need us to approve anything? No, you're just signing a PO. Okay, so, so, let's let Ashley talk to David and get, from David, or you or Ashley or whoever, communicate with David. If he signs off on it, then she can sign the PO and you can do it.
Okay, and
I think, if Janet
Do you have money in your budget for this?
We do.
Okay, okay. I think, you know, I don't want to see anything that's going to hold this up too much.
Agreed.
Because I think it really needs to be done. I've, I've been there, and I've seen how wet it is in that area.
I just, there was concerns in the spring, and I just want to make sure that those people that were concerned in the spring are not still concerned.
Correct, and I get that. And I remember the beaver dam that was moved from the top of Pleasant Street.
Oh, yes.
What happened to Pleasant Lake at that time, and that was a while ago, so but I do think that if this gentleman looks at it and feels that it's appropriate, I, you know, I want Bob to be able to, they've spent a lot of time on this.
Agreed, yeah.
So, what would our timing be? Do we need to have another meeting? Or how do we do this?
Nope. If David gives the go-ahead, then just do it.
Okay.
And I just want to set expectations. I am not back in the office. I'm in off-site meetings until early to mid-afternoon tomorrow, so I, I will get to this in the afternoon, but I just want to level set that I, it will probably not be until later in the afternoon.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Bob. Thanks for all your work.
All right. Thank you for your time.
If, if we were to have a problem, someone threw up a flag, we could always schedule
Another meeting.
Another meeting promptly, because I agree with Janet, that this sounds like something we don't want to
Yeah.
We don't want to wait on.
Yeah.
We really have to get back to Department of Agriculture, or we're going to lose our spot.
Okay.
That's the, that's the concern. There aren't a lot of people that want to do this type of work.
And we might also lose the Department of Agriculture in the meantime, so
Exactly. Act quickly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Really appreciate it. Anybody else have any public comments for anything not on the agenda? Okay. All right. Old business, dispatch study update. So, I have a little thing here that I need to read, that I can hopefully find. Here we go. Thank you all. Okay, so, as of now, the dispatch study is on hold. While the town of New London allocates funding towards necessary work at the Department of Public Works building on South Pleasant Street. This shift in priorities is essential to address the infrastructure needs of that facility, as you've all been hearing, but we just wanted this on the record. So, in the meantime, Ashley, could you please begin gathering information on pricing for the dispatch study from whatever entities you can find, so that we're ready to go when we can, when we might be incorporating those costs into the budget planning process? Not quite sure yet, but this will allow us to revisit the study in a more financially strategic and prepared manner. So, there you go. That's in the record. And, okay, so next, new business, sidewalk sinkhole between the Hannaford and the post office. So, you both received an email from Bob, so I think you're up to date on that, so I think maybe we'll start with Adam to give us an update on what you know about the sinkhole Thanks, Jen.
Nice to see you.
You too.
And I'll just sit here in case Bob wants to use that microphone at some point. We each have a, a spot, but, so, I think the majority of what I know is included in Bob's memo, so I won't, you know, repeat all of it, but I think everybody is aware that there is a sinkhole that developed two and a half years ago or so between Newport Road and the retention pond at the Mountain View Shopping Plaza, Hannaford. This has been a long and relatively convoluted process that we have initially facilitated by reaching out to CrossPoint and alerting them that it was there. Somebody from Hannaford or CrossPoint had tossed a grade stake essentially in it originally to demarcate where the sinkhole was. I, at that time, reached out to Bob Harrington and asked him to put the barrel and the caution tape there, which remains today, because there was a sinkhole. It's not a town sidewalk. It is owned by the property owner, so it's not our infrastructure. At that point, we facilitated communications with DOT, and CrossPoint, DOT, myself, some others, had a site visit to discuss what was there. CrossPoint then sent DOT a letter asserting that there was a shared cost in the repair. It is a bit of a tangled web on who has ultimate responsibility. I'm sure as many of you who have lived here a long time can remember, all of those properties used to be owned by one family, and over the years, as they were developed, and then ultimately, when the post office was sold to the postal service years after they began leasing it to them, they never recorded any kind of drainage man or responsible parties for the, the overall infrastructure and what's going to happen when that needs to be done. And so, there is a battle that is going on between CrossPoint and DOT right now. DOT's lawyers, the Department of Justice, which, you know, sounds a lot scarier, I think, than it is, but, but that is essentially just their legal staff, has been supposed to be returning their interpretation of CrossPoint's position for many months now, and as recently as four or five weeks ago, checked in with the DOT district engineer, and that still had not been delivered, and so they still have not come to a resolution on the responsible parties. There is a sort of separate concern to the, the actual water and it going to the bog and the lake, and what nutrients are being carried through that, and it's sort of, it's all centered around one pond, but it's sort of two arms of the issue that is sort of being worked on separately, I guess you'd say. That's sort of the Cliff Notes version. I don't know if there's anything that I missed that Bob wants to fill in on, but
Okay. So, I guess we want to hear from Bob, because Bob is asking the town to get involved.
Good evening, thank you. Bob Bowers, resident of New London. Thank you for hearing me out. Adam has done yeoman's work in the last couple, two and a half years, trying to coordinate and get people to get on the same page to do things. He pointed out very early on in the process that there was a safety concern. He raised it a few more times, and I think he has done about what you could expect could be done at that level. And what I am proposing and hoping for is that there be a more official, stronger push by the town by having the board become directly involved in talking with, not saying, "Do this or do that," the parties to see what might be done. And as I suggested in my memo, though, there appear to me to be two different issues involved. I'm focusing on the sidewalk safety issue. There is potentially the other issue that CrossPoint, on behalf of Mountain View, is arguing with the state about, is how did that sinkhole come about? Is it drainage from the pond? Is there salt in the pipes that has done something wrong? Has the state got a drainage pipe that comes across that empties into it? All kinds of things, and it's a bit of a finger point going on. At the same time, CrossPoint has indicated that they would like to bring this matter to a close and are willing to cover some of the costs, and that then leads you to wonder what that may mean. I am hopeful that the board might delegate the chair to sort of lead an effort to reach out, stepping in where, where Adam has left off in a way, because there's been some, in the emails, there's been a few things of saying, "I thought we were going to get together, and it hasn't happened." And I think that the chair in particular, in my dealing with her, has that kind of empathy for people, the willingness to listen to people, they're listening to new ideas, that might manage to make this a workable proposition where we can reach for a solution in two ways, and first of all, would be the sidewalk. As you might be aware, that is often referred to as quasi-public property when it's a, when it's a shopping center, because people come in and out, the public does, and it's not a town sidewalk, and it's got the oddity that it seems to have been built on the state right of way without the state knowing it. I'm not sure of that, but as Adam has pointed out, and he's had the fun of dealing with, it's not actually on Mountain View property, it's not actually on post office property. It is on state property, but you have a pond on Mountain View property that has a drainage system that runs under there, we think, I don't know. Apparently Charlie Hirschberg is the engineer that designed it, and maybe he knows. You have an easement that says that post office can have its drainage drain into the drainage pond, and that the costs would be shared in a proportionate way as set forth in the easement if work had to be done. So, you've got this convoluted thing of, do you do the work to find out if there really is a problem? Because as far as I can tell, maybe Adam knows, neither the state nor Mountain View, CrossPoint, has dug a hole to find a pipe to see if there's a problem. If logic comes to play, when you have a sinkhole, it usually means something has disappeared underneath the ground and caused it to fall. That is why a lot of people think perhaps it's a pipe. But I think that sinkhole, and I may be wrong, may have been where there had been a storm drain at one point, do you know?
That wasn't what the district engineer shared, but that doesn't mean that that's not a possibility.
Well, so my first thought is that if somebody like the chair could work with these people and say, "Hey, state and CrossPoint, why don't you dig down and find out if there really is a problem in a pipe under that place? If there is, then you can go forward. If there's not, why don't we fill in the hole? Why don't you fill in the hole? State or somebody fill in the hole." That leaves you within a leveled off ground, and then you could rebuild that sidewalk. If you actually look at the sidewalk, unfortunately, they didn't think it through when they built it, it goes downhill. At the same time, you have the runoff from the highway, probably some from the post office, fills it up with sand, it's about two inches of sand on the bottom of the sidewalk. It seems like it could be built up. It seems like the chair could, working with these people, say, "CrossPoint, you say you're willing to contribute to this? Dig the hole, find out about the pipes, but could you also find a contractor, what it would cost, to build the sidewalk back up two feet higher in some way, probably with a culvert, as I have suggested in my memo, so that water can run back and forth, and fix the sidewalk? It's 90 feet long, it's not likely to be a large cost, they may be willing to participate." And one would hope, start saying, "Don't keep just sort of saying, 'We can't do it, we can't do it,'" including the town frankly, saying, "We can't do it. Why don't we all see if there's a solution that we can all work through and work with and make it work? That may take some time, but I've suggested June 30th as a, it's been two and a half years, one more year, why don't, I mean, can't we work something out that will go through?" I'm not saying there's, my, I've thrown out some ideas in my memo, and I have ideas in my head, but that's not where it needs to come from. It needs to come from the town, the state, CrossPoint, and unfortunately, US post office, as I point out, and it's arguable whether it's enforceable in any way, but that site plan required the sidewalk, and the site plan was approved for the post office property, and there would seem to be an implied obligation to keep that in good order.
Bob, can I ask you a quick question?
Absolutely.
Where did you see where CrossPoint said that they would be willing to pay for part of the costs?
They didn't say sidewalks, I'll tell you that. Let me get my glasses. I think it was the 24th.
Okay.
I believe it was in the, the proposal that they actually made to DOT.
Well, I've never saw that one, but in, in one of the emails, and I think I recited the, the date in my memo
In this attachment, in your attachment here? Okay.
And, and in the memo itself, I, I think.
Okay. I mean
Here it is. "Nine, six, twenty-four, CrossPoint, willing to cooperate and share costs." That was my consolidation of the actual more flowery language.
And then they filed their, and then they filed their
Right, they, what they sent in an informal email, they then, which I have not seen either, I've only been told verbally
Oh, okay.
What, how it was in it, but they then formalized that by sending DOT an official letter.
Yeah. Okay.
As far as going forward, I'm happy to write a letter on your behalf for you to review. I don't think it hurts anything.
It doesn't.
You know, with them, I'm sure their lawyers are going to continue to go at it.
I know, and we've heard
It's two and a half years of a spin.
I know, and it's, it's an eyesore, and it's, so, Mike, do you know if the, under that whole And so, Mike, do you know if, under that hole, there is a pipe that's missing? Is there, I can't remember if Charlie talked about that during our meeting that we had with him.
So the best people, as far as I know, the best that people can determine is that there probably is corrugated pipe that has fallen apart.
That's right.
That has contributed to the concrete basin itself.
Yeah.
The structure collapsing. So who's responsible for that?
For that pipe.
I think for the issue is so, because I recall, CrossPoint was saying, "We're responsible for maintenance, but this isn't maintenance. This is something different." And they wanted the state to be involved, whether it was, I think, DOT. So that's where the finger pointing to Bob.
Yeah.
And Bob, do you know, I mean, I'm sure everyone also saw when Fenwood had the sinkhole at the end of their driveway, and this all was within a three-month time period?
The Fenwood problem arose at the same time, and they got the sort of the same runaround, the CrossPoint, state, blah, blah, and it's a housing development. We just spent the money and fixed it, and said, "We would love you to pay us back if you decide you really are liable," but we just fixed it.
And in that situation, there, because they haven't actually camered that whole line.
No.
There was an assertion made that the pipe that caused that issue was actually a wick drain from the road, if I remember correctly.
I don't remember the rationale. I just remember paying the money.
Because of the ground It was a wick to take it off, and I don't think they ever did the exploration. Fenwood fixed the problem, and that portion kind of went away. But it is a relatively messy design, and it is not well-laid out indeed, where these are and who is the responsible party.
Okay. So I'm happy to try to reach out to CrossPoint. It doesn't hurt.
It's, I think if you tried to reach out to CrossPoint on behalf of Mountain View. Maybe reconnect with the postal service, who is trying to wash their hands of this, and I don't imagine you're going to get very far with them. And the state, and say, "Look, could you go through this in a step-by-step process? Dig a hole, find out if there's a corrugated pipe busted down there. If there's not, and it's just dirt, fill it in with state sand." And maybe where this is, the town can show the goodwill and say, "Well, we'll send Sam and Dump a Truck load in," or charge you a dollar for it, so we don't give it away, I guess.
But the concrete basin serves a function, so it's not just a matter of filling in pipe. I think it is a matter of, because there's more than one pipe, as you said. People are not sure whose pipe it is that goes where, so that I think there probably needs to be an engineering study
Yes.
Exactly what has happened in that span. So there is a pipe that probably was placed once the corrugated pipe failed, that actually is what discharges into the bog. So by the way, this is also something, I'm sorry, Bob didn't stick around, but the Conservation Commission is concerned about, because, of course, they're responsible for maintaining the bog. So I do think it's a matter of trying to get the various pieces of this puzzle together. Charlie was part of the design, as I understand, to begin with. He has a lot of institutional memory, but finding plans for what happened has been impossible.
And we have the site plans. They're not necessarily the engineered, you know, final plans. Even those were virtually impossible. They were filed under the Baptist Church Steeple Study that we've done. And so when Bob came in to look at those, what was that, a year and a half ago? It took us the better part of two months to find them, and then we were able to get all of that to DOT as well, because they were doing their fact-finding. And so it was literally me taking pictures and sending those to the DOT engineer, so that they could have some reference to what these site plans were.
The other piece of this, this is maintenance, is, in my opinion, is that CrossPoint, their contractor, in the winter, piles all of that snow
Yeah, into the pond.
Into the basin.
Right.
So they're continuing to contribute to whatever drainage is ordered.
Yeah.
But that's another piece that needs to be there separately, but it obviously contributes to
Right.
Of course, from a water quality perspective, all of that snow is loaded with salt.
Yep. And flowing into the bog.
And flowing to the bog, which bogs are good at absorbing chloride, but a lot of it is going across into the road to Murray Pond and into the lake.
Yeah.
So that's the other piece of this.
And while the functioning level of the pond is sort of undetermined at the moment, you know, obviously, we haven't had any rain of measurable amount in quite some time, but last spring, when we were in the complete opposite, it did appear as if the pond was functioning properly, as, you know, we'd get a storm, it would come up, and then a couple days later, it would go down. So it does appear like there's still some functionality to it, to the extent that it's entirely functional at this point, not sure. And there is regular maintenance that needs to be done there.
Right.
So what I'm, my point obviously is the sidewalk part. The drainage thing, I agree 100% with everything that's, and it too needs to be moved along. But it seems to me that the cost element and time element of just making that sidewalk passable and safe, and getting rid of that ugly barrel, might be something that can be accommodated as a good-faith effort on CrossPoint's part or somebody's part, to just show that they care enough to do this. And I'm hopeful that somebody like you could bring the weight of the board and say, "It's not just trying to talk with you now, it's really an issue. It's been two and a half years. Do the sidewalk and figure out all this other stuff." I mean, they need an engineer, like you say, to go figure it out. And I didn't know they did cameras once?
No, I said, "I don't believe they actually did."
Oh, well, it's like the sewers. Run a camera down. Anyway, thank you very much for
While you're here, but I will say, one idea that I did share with them when we went to one of the site visits, that they were not super enthusiastic about, but maybe it's worth approaching again, is if they're not willing to fill something in. Right now, I think there's a hesitancy from either party to fill something in, because then they are going to assume the liability of that and essentially agree to it's really their problem. If they are not willing to do that, could we simply put a steel construction plate over it, like you saw on a trench plate, like you saw on Main Street last year during the water main? There was hesitancy there, because obviously the weight of that over something that is unstable is not ideal, and the sinkhole could grow beneath it without you really knowing. It's sort of putting vinyl siding on a house. You have no idea, it's rotting behind that. So there was hesitancy there. Could that be a temporary stopgap for a safety perspective, that we say, "Hey, buys us two months that at least we don't have, you know, an open hole while we get this figured out?" That might be something to consider.
All right. We'll work on it, Bob.
I really appreciate you hearing me out and listening to this. I just, there are some older people in Fenwood that used to walk that walk, and they don't anymore. They don't.
You know, I agree that it should be resolved so that people can walk
Yeah.
on the sidewalk. But I also agree with Mike and what he said about what's going into Murray Pond, the bog, and consequently, Little Sunapee.
Yeah.
And I think that an engineering study really has to be done, and I'd hate to do one thing that would make it even worse. And I'm afraid that if we were to dig a hole, we would be making it worse, and there would be increased runoff into the bog, Murray Pond, and Little Sunapee.
Okay. Well, don't dig a hole then. Do what he says, fill it up, do the sidewalk. I mean, one friend of mine even said, "Jeez, down at Crescenti Bog, they've got all those nice little metal walkways. Buy one of those." Well, then I started thinking, maybe you need a railing, but whatever. But I know Adam has, it's frustrating, and I know Adam's put a lot of time and effort into this, and I know, I know all of you are concerned about it, because you've mentioned it, but I'm hopeful that maybe you can nudge some. By the way, the DOT going to their attorneys is just getting an opinion that says, "We're not responsible." You know that. That's all that's about.
But I do suggest talking to Bob Brown, because I think he has a community with DOT.
Okay.
Don't know this for sure, but he should be part of Brown's decision.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it, all of you.
Thanks, Bob.
Bob, just for the record, Bob, I would also just state that your memo was my favorite entitled memo this week.
I was wondering if anybody was going to actually say anything. It may show up again, too.
Thanks for staying, Mike.
You're welcome.
Okay. Town administrator report.
Yes, just quickly, municipal matters, we are, I sent the draft of the newsletter today to the department heads for them to look at. I think I've received some feedback already. We'll wait until the end of day tomorrow to get the rest of the feedback. We are targeting Monday or Tuesday of next week for that to go out. It is 11 pages long. There is quite a bit of really stellar content in there. So excited to get that out. And then just the second thing is that flag football, just an FYI, flag football starts Putnam, is it next week or the 13th? Monday, the 8th? Okay, so it is Monday. And that's for third to fifth graders? Third and fifth grader, third to fifth graders here on the town green.
Okay. Any committee meetings?
No.
Reports? Nope. I don't think I have any either. Okay. Approved meeting minutes from August 20th.
I move we accept the minutes.
I'll abstain.
You'll abstain? Okay, all in favor, aye. I did read through them. I just found actually one typo in the spelling of Ashley's name. Upcoming meetings aren't on here, except the 9/11 memorial event on 11:00 AM at the New London Fire Department, and the rest of the meetings are on our website. And we are going to, do you have the orange sheet?
Sure do.
I am going to make a motion to go in non-public for the reason of
We have a few.
We do?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We can do
This
Personal and real estate.
Personal and real estate. Are a Saint, but, so, we will use this, is it okay if I use this sheet?